Welcome to.
Welcome to a Lincoln City Council meeting on October, this is fifth, two thousand and sixteen. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda, and anyone wishing to speak on those items should come forward after the clerk reads that item. Testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker, and a timer will sound after four minutes as a reminder. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. Well, we don't have any of those today. All right. Will the clerk please call? The first, well, actually, are you going to read?
Yes, I'll read both items. These are setting a tax rate to set the tax request at an amount different than the property tax request for the prior year on the following two resolutions, approving the twenty sixteen, seventeen city tax rate of point three-three, three-six-six per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, and approving twenty sixteen, seventeen city tax rate of point three-two-one-nine-four per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
And for the benefit of anyone who may be watching at home, this is a special public hearing to discuss the tax levy for the twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen budget. We've had several of these special public hearings scheduled in order to try and be as responsive as quickly as possible to the court's decision regarding this issue. Previously, two special public hearings that were called were withdrawn or canceled because we still are awaiting the court's decision. But several of our colleagues have requested that we go forward with our meeting today, and I will let them explain the purpose for doing that today.
Very good. Thank you, Larian. I'd like to point out a couple, there are two important reasons I feel we need to have this meeting today. One is this is the last time the entire council will be together before the deadline of getting this levy to the county board. And out of respect to everyone, I think it's time we need to vote, so everyone has an opportunity to vote. The second is that having a levy in place is far preferable to having no levy before the deadline, since if due to any unforeseen circumstance, we could not have a levy in place by the deadline, then our previous revenues would be the basis for establishing a levy by default, which is not what the mayor wants or what the council majority wants. So that's the reasons we have for wanting this meeting today.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and proceed with the first item, Teresa.
All right. Resolution sixteen R two twenty was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl and seconded by Jane. Discussion.
Is there supposed to be a hearing on this? Is it, this is set for a special hearing, so I think we have to ask if anyone's going to.
Would anyone like to come forward to speak to this item?
That took care of that?
We have a very empty chamber.
[laughter]
There we go.
Heard enough.
Ask questions.
Do we have any staff questions? Jane has a staff question.
Could I ask our interim finance director to come forward? Don, could you come forward?
There we go.
Okay. Well, this is pretty easy. I guess, could you give us a historical, I guess, summary of the city budget briefly? I know that you've been the previous finance director, and then Steve was also involved, so how many times do you think the city council and the mayor have, I guess this is unique, but tell us a little bit about from your budget perspective and how former prior city councils and mayors have sought resolution to these difficult challenges?
I started as finance director in ninety-nine, about the same time as Councilman Camp.
We're the old guys.
We're the old guys, aren't we? And I retired in two thousand and eleven. I guess, you know, over the course of the, course of the years, there's always been issues and debates. This one is unique from my perspective.
Occurred before.
So I've not seen this before, but I think we always ultimately resolved it. I don't know that I can answer, add too much more to that unless you have.
Well, more specifically, so a perspective, when we have to file with the state of Nebraska, the property tax rate, how is that normally handled? And then in light of these special circumstances, how do you think it will be handled, knowing the urgency that we have to hear from the judge, Judge Ott, and also how we have to give the county board an opportunity to pass the political subdivision's property tax rate?
Well, it's my understanding that the county board has to certify, or there's some process on, on, on the eleventh, and obviously, we're down to the, you know, struggling to make that deadline, but I think the, the direction as to what will, you know, what will happen has been outlined, and hopefully, we get it resolved by then.
Is it, I guess if the Judge Ott doesn't rule, is it, can we request an extension? Is that possible?
I don't think that's possible.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other staff questions from council?
I have one.
Okay. Trent?
I'd like to talk to city law.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, city attorney.
So Jeff, item number one is the subject of a lawsuit, and that is not been decided. Can we really even act on this at this point? Is this something that we should even be voting on as far as that rate? Because that is the subject of, of the writ that's been filed against this entire council. I think the idea is that, you know, if, if, if there's a prevailing side, that if there's a writ issued against the council, that that would have to be taken up at the next meeting, which we have scheduled for next Tuesday. Can you give any advice on that?
Yeah, I would say that there is no principle of law that I'm aware of that would prevent you from taking any action, just because there is, that lawsuit that's going on. If there was an action, if some, one side or the other wanted to freeze the council and prevent it from doing something in the interim.
Okay.
Then it would be their obligation to go to court and ask for a stay. And those, there are circumstances where stays are requested, and circumstances where stays are granted to kind of freeze the situation in place.
Okay.
Nobody's asked the court for a stay. I don't know that a stay is necessarily appropriate in this circumstance.
Okay, that's sufficient for me. Thank you.
John.
Yes, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Along those lines, it appears to me there are three possible outcomes here as far as the mill levy rate, the tax rate that would be on property taxes. The mayor's asked for the point three-three, and, but the council adopted the point three-two. The mayor has purportedly vetoed that, and that is an issue in the current case. But, so you've got the mayor's rate, you've got what the city council passed, and then you have a third situation that if there's somewhat of an impasse, depending on the court decision, it would go back to the prior mill levy, which is slightly less because it wouldn't account for the stormwater bond. Does that sound like a summary of the three possible outcomes, or am I missing something else?
Well, my understanding was you don't go back to the prior, and maybe Don can correct me if I get this incorrect, but we don't go back to the prior tax rate, we go back to the prior tax receipts. Is that correct? And so it would actually be a lower rate than the rate was last year.
Okay, well.
But anyway, you're right, we have those three, those are the three options. So in other words, you have the mayor's rate, which is the highest rate, the council rate, which is the medium rate, and then the if nothing happens rate, which is the lowest rate.
Okay, so and the lowest rate would be a few million dollars less than we spend, well, the revenues would be the same as they had this year. And actually, if it's a dollar amount, or is it still the mill levy rate? Because with the mill levy rate, you'd still, if it was in existence, you'd get more money because of property valuations have increased.
I think the dollar amount that, that we have here is three point five eight zero million, three million five hundred eighty thousand six forty-eight.
Reduction?
Less.
Right. And that, as I understand it, the levy would be sufficient to cover last year's dollar amount, and because of the increased valuations, the actual levy would be a little bit less than last year. Is that correct?
And we still have the ten percent we didn't use last year that would carry forward that could be used. So it'd be a little less, we just have to tighten our, our budget, I mean, from the mayor's standpoint, the administration, we just have to tighten things and spend a little bit less, but still, a couple hundred million dollars we're spending, so. So those are the three options. And so before us today is the opportunity by resolution to, this body can vote on one of those two that would perhaps be a backup that might prevent having to go back to the former revenue level, as I understand it, so that there's value in passing something today. Is that a fair statement again?
Yes, I mean, there, of course, is the meeting set for next Tuesday. Now, it's also possible that the judge will not have a decision by next Tuesday. Certainly, there's nothing that requires him to give us an opinion or a decision by that day. So it's possible that if this body meets next Tuesday, he'll be in the same position that you are today.
Okay, thank you.
Jane.
Thank you. Jeff, could you talk a little bit about the stormwater bond that was passed? How is that, how does that go through this process? Does it move forward?
Well, it's been passed, so it, that, that levy is part of the levy, and I'm not sure how it interacts. If this council does not pass a tax rate, whether that stormwater levy is part of the levy that then the, the Lincoln taxpayers pay for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen? My assumption is that it is, but.
I guess the two, the two questions I have, it's in item number one and item number two, the stormwater bond, correct?
Right, yes.
But, but how is it, if, if we are still at an impasse, what happens, and if there is, say, an appeal filed, what happens to that stormwater bond increase, tax, property tax increase to move forward with that? Is that in limbo as well, or?
Do you know, Jan?
The stormwater bond's included in the total tax rate, so if you approve something less than that.
Do you want to come up and, yeah, I think it'd be good to get this in the microphones. Thank you.
And Jan, I think the question is, if no levy is passed, what happens with the stormwater levy?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Then it's not included in the tax rate.
Why don't you introduce yourself too?
Oh, I'm Jan Boland, City Budget Office. If, if the lesser tax rate is, is not, is approved, then the, the funding for the, the stormwater bond would not be included in there.
Excuse me, you're talking about number two?
I'm talking about if we reverted back to last year's tax rate. If we, if we use the council's approved one, then the stormwater bond is in there.
Ms. Boland, though, wouldn't, following up on what my colleague was asking, if we went back on that third option to last year's revenues?
Correct.
Those are revenues, and they would just, we've got to meet the obligation of stormwater bonds, so it'd just mean that within those revenues, there needs to be a reallocation, and this would be a priority to pay the stormwater bond, so there might be something else that would just go unfunded at this point. Or it might be too, that those are, this is all budget, and sales tax, you're saying we're going to go up three and a half percent for Christmas season, the best ever, so we may get more sales tax, we may get more property tax. So again, we're, we're trying to look in this crystal ball for the next two years.
Right.
And, and be conservative. Your former boss, Mr. Hubka, has always been that way generally, and Mr. Hers has done it as well, so we're trying to forecast here, so it's not a doomsday situation.
Jane.
Jan, I have another question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the stormwater bond six point five million or something?
It's not paid in one year, it's paid over twenty, what, fifteen, twenty years.
That I'm not, I'm not sure of, the exact amount.
What would, if it's paid over twenty years, over the next biennial budget, what would be the pullback, so, you know, where we'd have to keep shrinking to make sure that we could make that bond payment?
Couple hundred thousand, several hundred, it'd be six digits.
Every year, or?
Yeah.
I think the debt service payment was somewhere in the area of like six hundred and thirty, six hundred and fifty thousand. So that one would be, I mean, we've issued the bonds, we have an obligation to pay them, so if there, if we were at an impasse and the levy was set lower, the city would have to absorb those bond payments in order to keep their triple A bond rating. We'd have to pay the, we'd have to pay the note. I mean, we don't have any way around that.
So Trent, are you saying that it's six hundred thousand per year, or?
Six hundred thousand dollars per year.
So another one point two million we'd have to, to find a way to pay.
For the biennial?
Sorry?
For the biennial?
For the biennial, one point two million for the?
But it's also possible.
No, not for the biennial, for the annia, because the rate has the opportunity to be set again next year. So we're just talking about one year. This is a one-year levy rate.
Right.
So you're saying that it would be six hundred thousand dollars that we'd have to?
Yes.
Find a way to make the payments for?
Worst case scenario, yeah.
In addition to the, did you say three point five million, I think?
That, that, yeah. That's what we would be short if we went back to the current, the fifteen sixteen tax rate. Three point five million we would be short.
Plus the six hundred thousand, so we're looking at about?
That's including that.
Oh, that's the three point five included, the six hundred thousand bond payment for the stormwater?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carl.
That, that option to me is really, really troubling. John, my opinion kind of minimizes the impact. I mean, we've, we've looked at budgets for staff, I don't know what their average is, probably if you include health insurance and all the benefits and salary increases of two, two percent, three percent in some cases, probably five percent increases in an average employee in our city. If we're doing, if we have less funds to do what we're currently doing, only way to get there is cut people.
That's not true. No, we, in our budget.
I'm speaking, John. The, the only way to get there, in my opinion, is to cut people. And, and we've always protected people in this community who are vital. We've protected law enforcement, we've protected fire because of public safety. If we get to that level, I don't know that we can keep protecting them. That concerns me, so I don't want us to get there. I don't think any of us, hopefully, want to get there. And I'm not sure if we're talking just about one or two, but my opinion, my thoughts are really the same on both of them, it doesn't matter. The issue, we have an issue pending before the courts right now. And that's unfortunate, in my opinion. I think it's really unfortunate. But in reading the briefs, it's a real issue. It's, it's a legitimate legal issue that's out there that Judge Ott is, is considering. And based upon the, the results of Judge Ott's findings, that, that will influence me in how I will vote. Presumably, Judge Ott knows the urgency of this issue for the community, but as he said last Wednesday, he is taking this matter under advisement and is deliberating. Well, deliberating is by definition deliberate. It takes time. And I, I just need to wait. I just need, I'm not going to vote, vote in favor of either of these, because I want to wait and see what the judge's opinion is before I vote.
Okay, Jane and John, and then Cindy, sorry.
I have a question for you. Here's a radical thought. I don't know if this would be unprecedented, if in order to safeguard some property tax rate in accordance with the expenses that the city, many of them are, were obligated to pay, would it be appropriate, or throwing out to my colleagues, that if we voted seven oh on each one, in light of the fact that it is still being deliberated by the judge, and that way it moves forward to the mayor? At least we would have some property tax rate that would be there as a safety net going forward? I'm seeing council members shake their head no, maybe that was a dumb idea, but.
Well, I don't know without precedent, certainly, it's nothing that, that the city of Lincoln, to my knowledge, has ever had to do before. I was speaking with one of the L P S administrators, who in a former position had worked for a school in Sarpy County, and she was, said it, the situation we had reminded her of a situation that had in Sarpy County, where they had pending litigation, and in fact had, at least what she told me, and I haven't looked into it, so I'm, this is all secondhand, had voted on and sent to the county board in Sarpy County alternatives for the tax levy depending upon what happened with that pending litigation. That was a different situation from this, certainly, because the litigation was not internal within the, the school district, I think it was external, but that was how they decided to answer it in that case. It's no answer at the end of the day. I mean, what the county board will consider is the levy passed by the council, signed by the, by the mayor. But with the timing being what it is, I think it's possible that you could do both of those today. The mayor would not have to veto them prior to the Tuesday board meeting. He could presumably pass, assign one of them and, and forward it to the nine o'clock county board meeting.
So tell me, walk us through Tuesday. What would, what would happen on Tuesday? Tuesday morning, we would be, could be, possibly, like you've said before, very well in the same position?
Well, I would, I would hope not. I mean, every day that goes by, Judge Ott has another day to, to, to finish writing his opinion and deliver it to us. But yes, it's, it's certainly not impossible. You're here Tuesday at seven thirty, and you don't have that decision, in which case I would think the prudent thing to do would be to pass a levy and forward it to the county board, which is me, at nine o'clock on Tuesday.
So possibly on Tuesday, if we're still at an impasse, and I'd like to hear more about how Sarpy County handled it, and get more details in between now and Tuesday, but conceivably, we could on Tuesday morning, if we're still at an impasse, we could approve two property tax rates that could go before Lancaster County Board?
No, no, you can't. I mean, you could, you could pass two, I think, at this stage, with the idea that whatever, when the judge comes in, you get an opinion, then whatever matches that opinion is forwarded to the county board. On Tuesday morning, you've got to pass one, it's got to be assigned by the mayor, and it's got to go to the county board. I say it has to be, it doesn't. But if you don't, then you're stuck with that lower levy.
Okay.
That much lower levy.
We've got John next, then Cindy, then Trent.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, first of all, Mr. Eskridge, I, I think I, I didn't explain myself well. I'm not suggesting cutting people, I was just trying to define the three potential options here. And I would agree with you that one of the other two options is better than going back to what we had before. But, and I, even if we had to, we, if it's three and a half million less than, is that three and a half million less than what the council approved, Ms. Boland?
This would be from the current, the fifteen sixteen tax dollars.
So, so, thank you. So I agree, we, we want to be proactive in that matter. So I think that having one of those two is the prudent thing to do, but we at least need to define, just so we know what's out there, so I appreciate the comment you made. Thank you.
My question's been answered. Okay, Cindy.
My question's been answered, thank you.
Okay. Trent?
I just want to respond to Jane's idea. The reason I shook my head no was if we pass both tax rates, then Judge Ott doesn't rule, it's over.
Yeah.
And, and we, and we don't have an answer to that question. So that's why, I mean, that's why we can't do that. Now, I think we need to have a court decision on this. However, we're at the point where not all of us is going to be present for the next week, and I think out of respect to those folks that might be out of town, it would be appropriate for us to act today. And I would like, I would like to do that. I don't know that any other questions that we might answer up here this morning is going to get us to any other conclusion than how we feel or how we felt when we walked in the door today and knew how we were going to vote, because I trust that each one of us probably had a good idea of how we were going to vote moving forward. I like Carl, and don't think that if nothing happens, that's, that's a really bad deal. I, I want to make sure that at least there's something out there that covers both scenarios, and I think that's why we're here today. I do, I, I, I agree with Carl, I think we want to avoid a situation where we send no tax levy to the county board. I think that's not advisable, I think that's, that, so I think with action today, I think, I think we can avoid that, given the fact that we are all present today. Hopefully, the court rules. That, that would be great, but here we are this morning, and we, we don't have anything, so I think we should just move forward on both items, and then go about the rest of our day, so we can kind of, kind of get back to it. But I appreciate the time, thank you.
Roy.
I just want to circle back to a more complete answer on why passing both is not a good idea. At least for the majority of the council, because the scenario would follow is this, we pass both of them, the mayor signs his, vetoes ours, the judge considers the case settled and dismisses it. That's what happens if we pass both, so we can't do that.
And then I.
And then can I ask another question of my colleagues? What happens on Tuesday if the judge fails to rule? Then we're at the same impasse?
No, we've passed, we'll have passed a tax rate today. We're not at the same impasse.
The question for Chair, are we going to have an opportunity to discuss our vote?
Right now, this is still technically staff questions, so-
If we're new, we can sit down.
No, I actually have a few, but I want to make sure everyone else has had a chance. Okay. Just want to do some fact finding here. So Jeff, we've had proposals to say yes to both and to say no to both. You've said we actually could potentially pass both. That was one thing I want to confirm. Can we actually pass competing levies at the same time? Is that actually possible?
I can't think of a legal principle that would prevent you from doing that. You're not, that's not the final step in sending it to the county board. Obviously, then it goes to the mayor. So, I think that you could technically do that.
Okay. And what about voting no to both? Do you have any comments on that and any advice for council about that approach?
It just puts you where you are right now.
Okay. And that's my other question. What, where are we right now? We're hearing that we don't have a levy in place. Is that actually correct? I know this is what levy is in dispute and the mechanism for determining the levy is in dispute, but what is our situation today without a ruling?
Well, you've got the default levy, which is the tax receipts for the prior tax year. That's your levy that is in place.
Right now.
Right now.
Okay. And then we're here looking at numbers we've looked at before. And from what I understand of the advice that the mayor's separate counsel or attorney has given to the administration is that the alternative counsel levy is unlawful. So, if we were to then pass this today, how do we avoid being in the same position that we are in today? I mean, does not the mayor have to, if he takes his council's advice, go back and veto this levy once again? And what does that do to this? How are we actually avoiding this scenario where we fall back to the previous fiscal year's revenues?
Well, the argument that I think other people could make as well as I am is the mayor does not have to make the determination today or tomorrow to veto the levy. If a lower levy is passed today, he has the authority, I believe, to veto that levy. He doesn't need to do that today, tomorrow, Friday, or Monday. He could do that on Tuesday. And so, he could do that waiting for, he could hold off on the veto, waiting for the court's opinion. So, for example, if the court comes down with an opinion on Friday, releases the opinion five o'clock Friday, saying that he agrees with the mayor's position, that this levy, the council's levy is improper, the mayor could then veto it on Saturday. That levy is vetoed, you come in on Tuesday, you pass the mayor's levy. That's entirely within his hands. So, the Judge Ott comes out with an order on Friday, says that he disagrees with the mayor's position and that the council has the discretion to set the levy. Levy's been passed. The mayor, depending on how the order is written, the mayor might read the order and determine he doesn't have the authority to veto that levy. Doesn't veto the levy. The levy's there. The mayor signs it, it goes to the county board.
Okay. And as the attorney to the council, what is your advice to us again about our, about which is the lawful levy to pass today?
I think you just asked him to rule.
Well, he has, he's not counsel to either side in the lawsuit. He is our city attorney and I wanted just to have on the record once again what his advice to the council is.
Well, I've given my opinion to the council. That's on the record. It's now before the court and the court's going to rule on it. I've got no reason to change my opinion, but it's before the court. So, I'm not sure that that guides this council's, oh, my opinion didn't guide this council in the first place. But it hasn't changed, but it is before the court and we'll have a decision here shortly.
Kyle?
Jeff, procedurally, whatever the decision is, it's likely or possible, I guess, that unless it's just so black and white clear that there may be an appeal. But, talk about the timing of that. How long would such an appeal need? Would you estimate?
You know, I haven't looked real closely at what the backlog is. I would assume this is the type of case, because of its unique nature, that the Supreme Court would be interested in taking it up and taking away from the Court of Appeals. So, you don't have to go to the Court of Appeals and then the Supreme Court. But I would say, you know, four would be, four months would be the very, very earliest. Wouldn't surprise me if it was eight or nine months. But regardless of, if it did go up on appeal, and I think that's something that the parties are going to have to think about carefully after they've received the opinion. But even if it does go up on appeal, the levy is set for the year. And so, if you get an opinion, whether it's May or June or July or really early and it comes down in March, the levy has been there for the year and then you're coming up basically on the 2017, 2018 tax year, which you'll have another levy to consider and pass at that point.
Okay. And just so council members know, I was going through my foggy brain, is I guess my feeling is it would be great if we could agree, whatever the outcome is in court, given the fact that it is going to be six months plus before we have, before the appeal process could run, that we simply agree that we would likely go with what Judge Ott advises, what his opinion directs us to be. Then if there's a need for an appeal, then you've got the opportunity to do that before the fair runs next year.
Any other questions for staff?
I do have one last question, again about this issue of voting no. Is there any implication for the matter before the courts of voting no to both? Like, is there any signal or any indication that we would need to be aware of if we vote no to both? Any implications for the future?
As a legal principle, I don't think the court pays any attention to what the council does today. I mean, the matter has been argued, it's a matter of legal principle, it's been argued to the court. The court has taken it under advisement. A court should not take any regard for anything that is not formally brought before that court. So, both sides have an opportunity to present evidence. It's not likely that attorneys for either side would say, go rushing over and say, "Did you see what the council did today?" So, that would be my legal opinion.
Thank you. Okay.
Voting session.
All right. Yeah, Teresa, can you take us to the voting session?
Yes, for item one. Camp?
Oh, wait, I think we want to have some discussion. We moved and seconded this earlier, but that was mistaken on my part for not calling the testimony. Maybe we should have another motion and second, just to clarify where we got.
This was moved by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl and seconded by Jane. Any further discussion on item one? Jane?
I know this has been quite a tumultuous budget process for all of us and it's quite unique. I do intend to support and vote yes for this proposed tax rate, that we have a lot of financial obligations going forward with either property tax rate. The thought of being in a situation where we have to work with a previous tax rate, Carl is right. We have six new police officers on the slate to be hired, firefighters, paramedics, public transportation issues, weights of fixing our roads, plowing our roads, loss of revenue from the occupation tax, the pension burden always there of $7.8 million, funding for the Emerald Ash Bore. There's a lot of financial obligations, bond issues that can't move around and we don't have a wiggle room about this. It's unfortunate that we are in this position, a position that no other city council has been asked or forced to face. I want to make it also publicly known that I certainly intend to abide by the decision of the judge, no matter which direction it goes, because I can't imagine leaving our great city without the appropriate revenues to sustain our tremendous momentum. And for all the reasons I outlined above, I cannot even begin to imagine not fulfilling my duty and obligation that I swore an oath to uphold, to make sure that I do everything that is in the best interest of our public. So, I will vote yes on this.
Any further discussion on item one? All right. I had hoped to wait to cast a vote on this until we had, I think like all of us had hoped to wait to cast a vote until we had the court's ruling. We don't have that and there's a desire to go ahead and vote anyway today. It would be so nice to get to the place where we have consensus and I guess I would add that I too hope that when we do have that ruling, we can not find ourselves at an impasse, but get that consensus and get back to doing business for the city. All right, Teresa, please call the roll.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
No.
Eskridge?
No.
Fellers?
No.
Gaylor Beard?
I will vote yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion lost two to five. Next then is item two, approving the 2016-17 city tax rate of .32194 per $100 of assessed valuation, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Cindy?
Thank you. So, there's been a lot of discussion of how we got here and this, we've passed this levy before. And when the mayor vetoed this levy, he put us in a very, the city in a very precarious position, as we've heard today. Because if we end up without any levy, then we end up going back to a previous levy that's insufficient. And I think all of us agree that should not be the case. That's not something that we want. You know, we have, like has been discussed, this levy includes the stormwater bond. We, going back to last year's money does not include, I mean, it may be attractive because it's a lower rate, but it doesn't include the money for the infrastructure and stormwater bond that so many people in the city overwhelmingly supported. And so, I think it's important that we have a levy in place. We already had an opportunity to do that. That's in the best interest of the city, I think we can all agree, to have something in place. Today, we have as a group an opportunity to do that, to serve the best interests of the city. And then if the mayor chooses to veto that once again and put the city back on these, on this road, that's on his shoulder. We do what we do for the best interest of the people, to make sure that there's a levy in place. We have an opportunity to do that today and I think that we should absolutely do it. One of the things we did prior to the time that we brought this figure forward is we checked and double-checked with Steve Hubka in order to make sure not only that the budget numbers balanced, but also that the stormwater bond that the people voted on was included in this number. And I think that's really important. This is the wish of the people and we need to take that into consideration and support this bond in my estimation.
Jane, then Carl.
Well, I intend not to support this property tax rate. For, I think the last three city council meetings, I have diligently read from the city charter about the budget process, the biennial budget process, and the language in the charter. And I think in the state of Nebraska, having a home rule charter for the City of Lincoln as well as the City of Omaha has a home rule charter, that puts us in a very unique position. And the charter guides us, directs us, informs us, authorizes us to take the necessary steps. And I have always felt that we have to abide by the directives of the charter, even though I know right now it is being considered by a judge. And I certainly, again, will state that I will respect the decision of the judge. But I don't respect the process that, this convoluted process that led us to this court case. And to me, that is what is troubling when we are directed by our charter on how to handle the budget process. You know, the example that I gave this morning at the Chamber of Commerce meeting to show just how unique the City of Lincoln is, when this body passed the ban and prohibition against the Chinese lanterns, the sale of those in the City of Lincoln in our political subdivision district, that was something unique. And when we turned to the county board and said, "Okay, for consistencies throughout this whole county, why don't you guys go ahead and pass the same thing?" But when it got to the county board, they had no authority. They had nothing in their statute that would give them permission to go ahead and do exactly what the City of Lincoln was able to do, because we have that legislative authority, because the city council does have the authority. And we've always had the authority when it came to directing and guiding our budget. It's a matter of working together, compromising together, and not drawing lines in the sand, but working together to assure that we have those five votes of collective, cooperative, collaborative thinking to move our city forward rather than getting stuck right here where we are at today and we very well may be stuck in this same place on Tuesday. To me, that is disheartening. I certainly hope that we will not be in the same place on Tuesday, but I have to be consistent and say, "I cannot support this rate because I feel," I'm not a lawyer, I'm certainly not a judge, but to me, our charter is so crystal clear. Our charter is so crystal clear about going back to the ban on the Chinese lanterns, the state of Nebraska had nothing in their books. The Unicameral had nothing passed to be able to direct and guide the whole state of Nebraska on how to ban Chinese lanterns and the property damage that they can do. But we have the authority to move forward that really guides us. And so, I cannot support this property tax rate at this point in time until the judge makes a determination and I certainly will abide by the judge's decision. So, I will be voting no.
Carl?
My remarks are very similar to Jane's. We've got a pending legal issue and it's in the courts. And my personal opinion, I'm not going to argue the case here, but my personal opinion is the charter authorizes the mayor to veto the budget and then we have the obligation to set the levy at whatever the council's budget is. And if the mayor's budget is the one that's standing, that's the levy we need to set. But that's for the courts to decide now. And so, as I voted no for the first one for that reason, I'm voting no for this one as well.
Anyone else like to speak?
So, because the charter requires us to balance the budget and because at the moment the council's adopted budget has been vetoed and that veto is not overridden, and while the courts are deciding this, I'm still operating under the assumption that we will be defaulting, as the charter states, to the mayor's proposal. And in order to comply with the requirement that we have sufficient revenues to support the budget, I will be voting against this because it does not provide those sufficient revenues. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Motion carried four to three.
I move adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Cindy. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.